Welcome to the February meeting of council. Apologies?
Oh, no.
None of your apologies, everybody's excellent. Any declarations of interest from anybody in relation to questions on the agenda? We have none. And we do have a public question. Yes?
I was just bearing in mind that the budget is on the agenda today. And how expected council members might be thinking of the usual point we might make, that we do have standing dispensation for councillors that are tenants of council properties that enables them to participate in debate and discussion and voting in respect to the budget and particularly the HRA and so on.
That's a very helpful point, thank you. We'll come back to that soon. Okay, so we do have one public question. Mr James Hawke, who came to our last council meeting as well. Your interest in local democracy is commendable. Would you like to come up to the front and ask your question?
Thank you, goodnight sir, I'm David. I attempted to attend the cabinet as a member of the public last month, but found the public entrance locked upon my arrival. It remained unlocked after the start time of the meeting, and I only managed to get in by calling up a friend of mine, councillor Dobbuk, who recommended waving frantically in the employee entrance until security came to investigate. I've also discovered that closing the public door 30 minutes before the cabinet begins has been common policy for a while. There is no mention of this on the council's website. Is the leader aware of this occurrence from last time? And may I please seek assurances that changes have been made or will soon be made to address such a fundamental error of judgment? Public oversight and accountability of power are cornerstone of democracy that contrary to the evidence, I would hope this council takes seriously.
Well, thank you very much for your question. I would say that I was aware of it, as it were, in real time. And every endeavour was then made to ensure that you were able to attend the cabinet meeting and I remember seeing you in the room. So that, I think, is an important point to make. So it was an unfortunate incident. I apologise for any inconvenience this caused. I can assure you that the council is committed to open and transparent governance and it's demonstrated by the fact that many of our meetings are live streamed to ensure people can watch at that convenience. I would add the many public consultations, including a discussion this evening about our budget consultation, a demonstration that we are actively engaged with that important principle of democratic engagement. So, just to the specifics of your question, the standard procedure is for the front doors to be opened 15 minutes before a public meeting starts and to remain open for 30 minutes with a telephone number to contact staff to gain entry outside of these times. On this occasion, just as the meeting started, we became aware of the issue and immediately requested that doors be reopened and outside check done to ensure anyone waiting was given access to the meeting. We have reviewed the process to make certain that all elements, council members are aware to ensure that the error does not occur again. So thank you very much that brings you that matter to my attention. You're obviously welcome to ask me a supplementary question, should you wish.
Thank you. I do note for the avoidance of doubt that the door was indeed open today. No problems in arriving. Obviously, I didn't eventually make it in last time. As stated in the original question, oversight and accountability of those in power is supremely important to democracy. And these concepts are disturbingly increasingly under threat, most notably with the government's new voter ID legislation.
Indeed.
Even with conciliatory provisions, this will inevitably disenfranchise citizens of their right to vote and therefore also their right to hold power to account. As such, I was gratified to see councillor Wright's motion deplorably passed unanimously at full council last week. Given that through the motion, the council and indeed the Labour group has expressed its regret that the fatal motion that would have killed off the passage of this legislation did not receive necessary support from the opposition in the Lords, will the leader consider putting this regret in writing to his comrades in the Lords who abstained?
Using my latitude as cheer of cabinets, I've allowed you to hear a broader topic which is not directly linked to your question, the specifics that you required of us. What I can say to you is that this council has put the resources, the effort, the time for its democratic services team and in a number of different ways over some period of time, because this is legislation which the government had put in its 2019 manifesto to attack these proposals. So you can be rest assured that we are making sure that everybody is able to vote or has the means to be able to provide identification when we get to the May local elections and we will continue to work vigorously around that. And actually, it's been a united view on this issue across all parties. So we were grateful for the motion. And I'm grateful to be able to say, as it were, to camera, to remind people who are watching that there is that opportunity. I mean, I would say, just as a final point, and then we must move on, is the concern about, you know, a fundamental error of judgment. In our lives, there are things at scale which are serious issues and sometimes there are minor errors of judgment. And I would not say that this was the equivalent of the Catholic Centre Party in 1943 failing to prevent the passing of the Enabling Act that introduced the Nazi dictatorship. I would see that as a fundamental error of justice and judgment. I would not see this dissolve in the same scale. So I think a degree of proportionality is always useful. Okay, thank you very much. I've enjoyed our exchange and I look forward to seeing you at future cabinet meetings and council meetings. I'm sure you'll be there for Budget Council. Well, we wait to see. I shall look out for you. Thank you very much, Mr Hawke. Okay, that's public questions. And now to the minutes. Are there any... Are we happy to pass these minutes? Is there any true and accurate record of the meeting? Good, give a look at our hands up. Excellent, thank you very much. And now we move on to item five, which is the tax reduction scheme, which is on page 11 of the agenda. And that is in the name of councillor Beth Jones.
Thank you. I'm incredibly proud to be able to bring this paper this evening and it's a testament to sound financial management of this council that we're in a position today to ask Cabinet to recommend to council the continuation of 100% council tax reduction scheme. We are only one of a handful of councils across the country that are doing so. And yes, we're in the financial position to continue it. But we'll say this is a conscious decision to continue in this time with incredibly hard choices for local authorities who are so financially constrained after more than a decade of Conservative government squeezing us, that we have made a choice that we will always work to protect the most vulnerable in our communities. For our nearest local residents, the choice is already too bleak. Heating or eating is a phrase we hear far too often and council tax is one burden too far. None of our neighbouring authorities choose to offer this support with their poorest residents most paying at least 15%. To sum this, may not seem a lot, but those in receipt, for example, of Universal Credit, a week's council tax, a month's council tax could be a week's food shop or the difference between having heating or not. There are some changes to the scheme in this paper, but crucially, the most crucial is enabling more people to access support, not less. The most notable being a switch about the information used around self-employed earnings, which puts more people into the scheme. Other changes include references to schemes such as the energy rebate, so they are not affecting this entitlement. I'd like to thank the working group for their input in reaching this recommendation and the strong commitment all demonstrated to continuation of the scheme. Also, thank Tanya and her colleagues for their excellent work in putting this together. And crucially, their clear and concise manner of explaining it to me. And so even I could understand. I think we can be justly proud that we're continuing to provide this scheme. As Labour council, we continue to use every tool available to support those who are most impacted by this Tory government.
Thank you, Tanya. And Julie, would you like to come forward to join us? Any points you would like to add to the introduction to the report?
Thank you. I think just one figure that would have been useful for me to have put in the report, it's always the afterthought, just to mention to you that we have just under 13,000 people now who have received the council tax reduction. And of that, 77.6% get full council tax reduction. So you can see that any change to that 100% would have quite an impact on the residents.
That's very helpful, it would be worth getting that noted in the record, as it were. Julie, anything you'd like to add to that? No?
Thank you.
Okay, right, I'll open up to questions. Any cabinet members want to add any points? This is something we're very proud of, I have to say.
Yeah, I just think it's something that we can all be very, very proud of and I know that we're all very proud of it. And we've managed throughout almost 10 years now to maintain this at 100%. And it's been a priority and it makes a big difference to people's lives. I think part of the reason why we're still able to do it, and we'll hear later on when we hear about the budget, is the excellent sound financial management that's enabled us to continue these schemes such as this.
Thanks, Mike.
Just like to echo Mike's words, actually. And I know over the years we've had other Labour councils wishing us to do otherwise. And I'm glad that we've managed to, through the sound financial management, to keep this scheme going. And I think everyone concerned with this to be commended.
Thank you very much. Okay, James, any questions?
Not a question, but just a point and really to sort of echo some of the comments. I'm very pleased that there's been unanimity from across party basis for the last decade in putting this through. And dare I say, when in chairing scrutiny last Thursday, I had a momentary pause for concern when councillor Sands sought assurance that the scheme was going to continue. I wondered if perhaps there was some wobbling going on. But fortunately councillor Kendrick was able to give him such assurance and hopefully set his fears at rest.
Yes, well, excuse me.
Please, I have different things to say.
Explores a range of issues, thank you very much. Lucy, I'm sure you've got a question.
Thank you, yes. I'd like to thank councillor Jones for presenting this and the councillors on the working group for their work and the officers for putting it together and support it, as James said. And note really that it costs about 1.37 million and protects the most financially vulnerable, as has been said. And we remain one of the few councils to provide that 100% scheme. So it's something everyone can be proud of. I wanted to ask a question about signposting. And given that, as has been said, this really helps the most vulnerable who are most at risk at the moment from support that the government constantly casts. Do we use our knowledge of who it goes to as a filter for proactive conversations with people? How's it embedded in wider support? So as best as it's another tool available. Is there automatic signposting on if you get it to other support?
Tanya, do you want to come in on that?
Yeah, we've worked very closely with the Financial Integration Consortium. We do, you know, signpost residents to the ENCAN service, which gets them into the right level of support because people have different support needs. And it can be quite difficult for us when we're just processing member quotas to actually know what that is. So we do try when we're actually working with the customers to actually get them to the right place for their support that they need. And we are just reviewing our letters. It's something that came out of a meeting that I attended a couple of weeks ago. So we're just reviewing those to make sure that we are signposting people correctly and giving as much information as we can because we're aware of the current situation. Cost of living crisis coming out of Covid, it's very difficult for people. So we just want to make sure that we are getting the right ideas to them.
Thank you very much. Any further points you'd want to make, that would be more?
Just I suppose it's nice that we exist in a sea of blue, that we're here for our residents at least. And if we can make things a little bit easier. I work in my other role with people across the county and I wish it's something we had, people had access to elsewhere. It's at least something I can put forward to them that we offer here, just to make that a little bit simpler for people. And that right now, 1% easier makes a massive difference to people's lives.
Absolutely, yes, I'll say. Okay, so we have a series, can we go to recommendations now then? Our web series of recommendations. Every year we make some adjustments to take account of changes in the benefit system and we're also looking at our own policies. So those recommendations are on page 11, over to page 12. We'll be happy to accept those recommendations. Excellent, thank you very much for that. Good, so now we go on to the next item.
Budget.
Budget, because the budget has been on my pages in a helpful way, but less helpful than I did. So now go on to the budget. And just to say by way of introduction on this, obviously, this is the proposals of the cabinet to go to council for consideration in just over a couple of weeks' time. I'm sure the cross-party politicians, keeping our powder dry, have attacked it, sort of honed. And we've had the benefit of this being considered at a scrutiny meeting as recent as last week. So probably on this occasion, we'll be relatively brief on this item. It will be given a fully re-lectured council. Over to me, councillor Kendrick.
Thank you very much, Chair, and indeed I will be relatively brief. This is the seventh budget I presented to the city council. In the previous six budgets, they've all been affected by large cuts on central government revenue support grants to this local authority. Yet, unlike many other councils, we have been able to protect key council services. This year, however, has been toughest. At a time when inflation is running at over 10%, in the recent local government settlement announced by a government, the cost of living power for this council will rise by just 4.7%. That is even less than the average of the district councils in this country and well below the level of inflation. Of course, we shouldn't be surprised. Our son of the Prime Minister in the Tory leadership election boasted to Tories in Tambridge Wells that he would take it from more deprived urban councils such as ourselves and give them to councils such as Tambridge Wells. Yet despite all this called by the government, in this city council budget, we have produced a lawful and balanced budget which protects the council's key services and does not draw down on reserves. This budget I present now is a remarkable achievement for both this administration, both in terms of the political leadership and the officer leadership. The services that we are able to maintain, the services that are so vital to the, especially to the many vulnerable citizens in our city. In the recent peer review, the judgement of the municipality council in terms of its finances was extremely sound, far and in a far better position than in most local authorities. We have recently just discussed the previous item, the council tax reduction scheme, that we have been able to maintain is a result of that strong financial position and the budget that I highlighted that I presented here. That is why we remain one of the very few councils left in England to continue with 100% council tax reduction scheme. And I should say that that really is important to those who live on the pigments of Universal Credit and have their annual income have to fork out to pay for council taxes, which they certainly have to do in the rest of Norwood. And I've told this story before, it's my manager who repeat. I have a friend of mine of the same age as myself, who due to a serious heart condition, is no longer able to work, has to rely upon Universal Credit. But unfortunately, he lives in Brompton and therefore out that meager sum he has to pay for all his council tax. Well, you don't have to do that here in Norwich. And I think that is something, together with the fact that we have managed to protect our vital services to be recognized, is something that all councils should be very proud of. I certainly am. So I very much commend this budget, both to this cabinet, the recommendation to this city council in two weeks' time, or actually even longer version of this budget speech. And I think we should, I'm sure this cabinet will do so with pride and a sense of achievement that we have managed once again, as I say, to protect the services of this city council, which does so much to protect the interests of the poorest and most vulnerable in our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Paul. Any other cabinet members want to chip in?
Very briefly, and thank you, Paul, and the officers that you work with, the excellent work that you have done this year and also for the previous seven budgets. I'd just like to go back to the feedback on the peer review where, and I think actually you could have gone a bit further, Paul. The leader, I think, of Barking and Dagenham, I think the phrase he used was that most local authorities would kill to be in the position that we are financially at the moment. And he recognised that that wasn't by accident, it was by design. It was because since the beginning of austerity and the custom of overgovernment funding, we've had a medium-term financial strategy and we've looked at the long term and we plan for the long term. And that's why we're in the position where we are at the moment. So once again, thank you for the work that you've done, the excellent work you've done.
Thank you, Caitlin.
I too will keep this very brief. People have been quite relieved, I think. So it's been thoroughly discussed by cabinet members and indeed by scrutiny last week. I think, yeah, you know, that was a good question and answering session. There are a number of recommendations in this paper. So for record, I support all of the ones that were, well, all of the recommendations, but especially the ones for the HRA. It is important to note that the HRA 30-year business plan confirms that the income, investment and expenditure to the councils assumed and planned for is sustainable over that 30-year term. It's really, really important. Just a few things within the report. Obviously, we have made significant progress with addressing the strike health and safety compliance in our homes. It has taken a lot of work and I have to commend officers for their tenacity in moving us through this. We have got significant challenges with funding for improvements to our council homes in line with our zero-carbon ambitions. But of course, we all know a change of government will certainly help us with that. So we're fingers across for that one. Nutrient neutrality has hit our building programme. But I'm hoping that those things will start to move very soon with the things we think we're in place now to be able to move on to planning consents. So over the next five years, we expect to be able to build about 234 new homes at Mark Cross, Arkell Street and Sprees School. That's ambitious projects, but they will, I'm very certain will happen. And it's just encouraging to realise that both homes are still being built at this present time because they went through planning before nutrient neutrality. So we should have more new homes delivered for the HRA in the spring of this year. We'll of course continue to repair and maintain our existing stock and invest in large sums of money, over 18 million. And this includes things like kitchens and bathrooms, bathroom adaptations, electrical upgrades and a host of things that are really important to people. We recognise this. The new door entry programme will commence in the next financial year. There is £75,000 still in the estate aesthetic programme, which we've continued for several years now. And we realise that that's making a considerable difference to how our residents feel about their community. Small improvements can make a great deal of difference. So I'd just like to thank the officers again for all the work that they do. It's not an easy task. There's always different priorities and competing priorities. But I'll leave it at that because we've got a long night ahead of us, I think.
Thank you very much. Any other cabinet members? Yes, please, Emma.
I'd also like to pick up on the scrutiny meeting, which I watched online if I couldn't be there in person. And I think the recommendation to come out of it was about piloting a whole house approach to decarbonisation of our council homes. Use data, information and practice gathered from the pilot alongside stock condition data and homography surveys to support the development of the housing revenue account decarbonisation plan. And as councillor Housers said, I think discussion and the informal recommendations that also came up were strong. This is something I would completely agree with as an ideal in both whole house, which hasn't always been feasible in practice, given the specific nature of the grant. We've often been dependent on both the times of the timescale of delivery and what you can use them for. And decarbonisation of our housing stock is something that a lot of work's been going on about already. Our approach to this has been touched upon in this meeting before and it's going to come on to the agenda for SEEP as part of our environmental programme work. So those papers are out now. But just to summarise quickly, an estimation of greenhouse gas emissions from our housing stock was completed in 2022 along with a high-level carbon production plan. And this will be used to inform our greenhouse gas mitigation plan of the council's social housing stock, which falls under our new environmental programme, which as I say, we'll be talking about next week in more detail at SEEP. At this meeting in December, the housing revenue account business plan and budget for 2023 to 2024 reported that we've estimated an investment of approximately 290 million is required to meet EPC Level C by 2030 and net zero carbon emissions by 2050. And this is included in the HRA business plan. And it also reported that £53 million to improve energy efficiency and carbon reduction measures is included within the five-year investment programme 23 to 28. So this work, it is a priority, a lot of work's been going on. I appreciate that this recommendation is clear that what we do has to be evidence-based and I completely support that as well. So as I say, thank you for scrutiny members for the discussion and recommendations to come out of it.
Thank you very much. And I think that was the, I'll bring in James, sort of an additional point you may want to make. Some informal meeting with some comments from scrutiny, but this was the one firm recommendation that came through that. And I think it's very helpful that Emma's been able to contextualise that. Did you just want to come in on the scrutiny recommendation?
Well, if I could, Chair, that's okay. There's, we obviously had the recommendation and councillor Hampton for her comments regarding that. It was an interesting two and a half hour meeting.
It was.
And despite it being two and a half hours, much powder was kept dry in relation to Budget Council, you know, we can say it's time. But no, there were a number of issues that were picked up as members went through each section of the papers that are coming. I'll just read the notes out that are prepared by officers. So one was on electronic advertising hoardings. I think there was something in the budget for future income from advertising. A member raised concerns regarding the use of electronic advertising hoardings on council land. The council's net zero carbon aspirations. Members wanted to see the cost implications of the council's net zero carbon aspirations represented in the budget. How would this be funded and what external sources of funding could be leveraged? The leader confirmed that the council's commitment to green financing and the interim chief finance officer advised work was underway to create a baseline to understand what the council's carbon output and benefits contract as well. We then had a bit of a discussion around the increase in rents, the 7%. Members discussed this 7% increase in the council's housing rents with some members concerned that this would affect the most vulnerable. It was noted by councillor Harris, sorry, by councillor Kendrick, that the most vulnerable would be protected by housing benefit or Universal Credit. Further members considered those in the Further, members considered those in the private rental sector were most vulnerable to rent inflation as there was no regulation to protect them. Talking about council housing stock in terms of bathrooms and kitchens and adopting a whole house approach to works, including retrofitting. Executive director of Community Services advised the stock condition survey was being undertaken and the buschery impact whole house approach being considered. Carbon reduction biodiversity, table four number one. The council proposed capital investments which relate to the corporate plan objectives asked if a strand on carbon reduction biodiversity could be added in the future. There was another discussion around the council's bank and whether at the point that that contract comes up for retendering, perhaps a more ethical bank could be looked at. We heard that there was limited options in the market, but the council waters agreed this could be considered when retendering was conducted. And that was the sort of brief synopsis of the bits that weren't actually recommendations, but I think were taken on board to go into thinking for future years. Thank you.
Yes, indeed. And commend scrutiny for raising these issues and we're able to get some responses about timescales. So for example, in terms of banking, the contract comes up in 2024. And then we will look afresh at the landscape, which hopefully will change to be more positive to give us more choice. But if we were to undertake an exercise that sought us to move our banks at this stage, that is a massive piece of work. So we need to let the contract run in due course and then we do a proper procurement process in due course. So those were recommendations, but they did get some, I think, helpful responses in terms of maybe recommendations coming forward from later scrutiny work for rent. We've had the conversation, discussion. The one thing that was a recommendation, which has been given a very full response by councillor Hampton. Lucy, questions on the budget? Question on the budget?
Question, yeah. There are so many questions.
Many could be asked. Many could be asked at full council.
I'm sure they will be.
I've got one for now. You'll be glad to know.
Pick the best of your crop.
Yes, I will. So thank you very much for the budget and for all the work on it. And we've had really good opportunities to look at it and ask questions. And we've asked them at scrutiny and we asked pre-scrutiny questions as well. We've had a lot of help from very skilled officers. So I really appreciate that. And the consultation as well. I don't think James mentioned, but again, the consultation's been wide and it's involved a lot more people this year, which is really encouraging to see. It would be nice if it started earlier, but maybe that's something we can work towards. So the question I wanted to ask, picking up on something that councillor Hampton said. I was going to talk about the £53 million. It's down as £53 million in SEEP and in the December cabinet, £53 million over five years. And it's in both those papers. So I'd expect to see £10 million in the current budget. But I can't find it in the budget papers or any of the £53 million actually stated, which you would expect to start in 23. So it's about finding exactly where that is in the paper. Papers here, we can't see. And you'd expect it to be equally distributed over the five years, I guess. But if it's the case it's not there this year, how can we be confident that it will be delivered over future years? So it's just to ask, where is it in the papers?
Without going through them all now, I wouldn't be confident to give you an answer immediately. If someone's in one of them, that end of the room can assist the talk.
Thank you, Chair. Apologies, councillor Galvin. The delay just needed to talk short about detail. So the costs for the decarbonisation work are not in the programme for next year as yet. It's just a kind of provisional sum. And as we're working through that information around stock condition and other survey work, we're going to further up that programme and it will go into the programme during next year. But we've made sure there's an allocation available in the business plan.
Okay, thank you. Adam Shaw, any signals you wanted to add? No, but thank you, thank you for your attendance this evening. Adam, did you want to come in first?
I was just going to highlight on the HRA capital programme at the bottom of page 121, there is £746k in the budget for next year for solar thermal slash photovoltaic and then £500k for each of the four following years.
Thank you. That's very helpful. Councillor Oliver.
Thank you, Chair. So we've been hearing about the budget consultation and we had some better response, everyone's understanding. We asked the residents and residents about their priorities. And, you know, it's quite hard to set in the budget is to be responsive to that consultation. Common themes that we saw emerging were some people's concern on the cost of living crisis, but particularly housing waste and recycling and parts made in spaces. Now, environmental services was highlighted by 28%. So maybe a standard response is an area that they would work as additional funding. Also, communities and neighbourhoods featured highly in response to certain questions. So I'd like to propose amendments to budget papers being recommended for councillors to provide for additional capital schemes to be included in 2023-24 programme. And I'd say thank you to officers for their proficiency and their achievement in helping to set a budget without drawing down reserves, which is some remarkable achievement really. And it's left us some headroom. We can, I would propose we create a London Norwich fund of £100,000 in order to support our key local priorities and respond to the priorities effectively. The council section one five officer has, happy to say, confirmed that this can be funded for £50,000 contribution made by our capital receipts and £50,000 for general fund capital receipts. So I think this shows that we are taking citizens' views, our residents' and our businesses' views as absolutely essential and responding accordingly. I hope that's something that everybody will be able to get to hand.
Thank you, thank you very much, councillor Oliver. So half of that money comes from your portfolio. Gareth, did you have any thoughts on that?
Very supportive of it. But as councillor Oliver has said, we've listened to what people have responded to in the consultation. It's really important for people's quality of life. So more than happy to contribute the £50,000 from the HRA and from the capital funds. I think that'd be a very, very good use of the money.
Okay. Still looking to get any last notes in general quotes before we come to consider this amendment?
Thank you. Yeah, so at the July 22 meeting of Cabinet, I was very honest about the scale of the financial challenge facing the council. And setting a balanced budget for the 2023-24 financial year starting in April and also coming in within budget this year, which we're on course to do, has been one of the hardest challenges the council's ever faced financially in amongst over a decade of severe funding constraint. The challenge this year was made significantly worse by inflation running at about 11% on average and more like 20% for capital infrastructure projects, which has increased the cost of almost everything the council does. So in practical terms, what that meant is that the impact of inflation meant that our forecast budget gap for the next financial year increased from £4 million to £6 million for our day-to-day services. So given that context, I'm very pleased that Cabinet has performed a set of recommendations for a balanced budget, not just for the 2023-24 financial year, but also over the medium term to 2027. In addition, and importantly, the budget proposals for next year reach a balanced position without the upfront use of reserves. The first time the city council's been able to do this for a number of years. This is important because the scale of risk and uncertainty means that having access to adequate reserves acts as a safety net to deal with unforeseen shocks and pressures. So overall, the budget proposals provide resources to deliver the council's priorities and avoid significant cuts to frontline services with significant investment in the number of key service areas. And aside from day-to-day spending on services, the budget proposals also provide for nearly £50 million worth of investment over the next five years, nearly £30 million next year, in crucial infrastructure projects for the city. So investment in skills, in redesigning areas of the city centre and supporting economic developments. And finally, the budget proposals also provides for investment of £36 million in 23-24 and total investment of £182 million over five years in council housing. Investment in our current stock of council homes and building new council homes. So as has been said, the recent LGA peer review of the council was very positive about our approach to financial management. And I believe that the proposals in front of Cabinet this evening put the council in a strong position to meet the challenges of the next few years and importantly, realize the significant opportunities ahead for the city. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Stephen. And we will be bringing the peer challenge report to our March cabinet meeting. I have to say, the amount of work that went into the budget, the line-by-line analysis and looking for the opportunity to make sure that we provide frontline services to our citizens at some difficult times we've all experienced, but many people acutely, is immense achievement. It's not down to luck or manner dropping from heaven. It's our endeavours and the expertise we have across the council. This is a whole council effort. It's commendable to every member of staff who lives in your hall and our partners as well in 2040 and so on, who also helped us with that process. So with those comments, I'm going to go to the recommendations. And we have one additional recommendation, which has been moved by councillor Oliver and seconded by councillor Harris, which is the additional funding, which will therefore form part of the recommendations from cabinets to full council in a couple of weeks' time. All those in favour, please? Thank you very much. Excellent. Okay, so now let's go on to page 183, which is the Corporate Performance Assurance Report. As you will see in the recommendations, there are two strands to this. One strand looks at the key performance indicators for this quarter, which is the third quarter, and the corporate risk register. And the second strand is to look at the financial position of that for the third quarter, the general fund and HRA capture programme. So I will cover the areas around performance indicators. Councillors Hendrick and Harris will make any comments they wish to make on the second recommendation. I'm going to be brief, colleagues, on this. And once again, I commend the quality of the information that we are provided with in a fairly accessible and clear form. There are sort of headline successes and then there is more detailed case studies going forward. It is about success, but it's also about challenges as well. We have to acknowledge this. And with every challenge that we face, we are, as it were, putting our shoulders to the wheel to make sure that we address those challenges or respond to issues that can emerge at any time that we need to account for. So I'm just going to refer to Appendix B in the papers, which you will find in my executive summary on 889. And then Appendix B, which is on page 197, or yes, which is in the particular report, looks at the different electorates in sequence. And good news on among community services around the domestic abuse housing alliance, new IT service operating model, rough slipper count improvement. And there's a whole belt of initiatives relating to the cost of living crisis, which, when we looked at the feedback from the budget consultation, that was force-wear and central in terms of people's concerns. And those are listed in some detail. We have issues around voids, but there are comments from our peer company that there is progress in this. And I think there is further progress given that these are retrospective in terms of looking at the third quarter. So work is being done around that, so high levels, the proactive working, and of course, issues around mould and a number of issues relating to that. You know, peeling this and mobilization to deal with those issues. Corporate and commercial services, I mean, budget report, we've touched on that. And just on the budget, there was a point that councillor Galvin mentioned that in earlier time of which we should carry out this budget consultation as well. We carry then that as early as possible because we wait for the government to give us our provisional financial settlement. Given that ministers can move blocks of money around without any constraint at all, means that that's always a rather uncertain experience. And we didn't actually get our final settlement until, I think, last week. So we do put those details out there in the most timely way possible. So in terms of other areas, improvements around contract management issues. And there's a new agreement with NPL. The challenges, and that links, of course, to the cost of living crisis, which is the discretionary housing payment funding. And despite topping that up as much as we can, that effectively has run out of funding. And we've got to find other ways, as we are in terms of working with people who find themselves in that situation to make sure that we can make early interventions and just check people's benefits and are we getting everything that they're entitled to. And we also have, you know, a very good HR case study, developments in the services, the King's Arms. Occupation, I was at a conference yesterday in Cambridge talking about, you know, our housing programmes. And I had a splendid photograph of before and after the King's Arms. A lot of interest in what the council's doing around housing, lots of requests around Goldsmith Street and so on. So our success in that area is validated externally. And the retail monitoring report in terms of, you know, commercial retail activity. And really challenging times for our businesses in the city. But actually, we're holding up very well at High and Palace. And comments about that. And then the great work that's been done on nutrient neutrality. Finding a solution to give us the headroom, to enable us to go forwards with plenty of applications like Anglia Square, but also for a whole series of other housing schemes that gave us, we talked about, but also for developers as well, other developers. So we're able to scope all of that. And, you know, our successful towns deal, there are challenges around rising costs and making sure we're able to, and we are able to deliver on that project. And then, of course, using revolving funds to make sure that we get longstanding sites that are being empty away and utilized for the benefit of the people of the city. So that's the landscape. People have read the reports. Anything else you would like to add? Anything to talk to us about that? If you can. Lou, anything for you? No? Okay. And any Cabinet members like to chip in? Gail?
You've got it so nicely, don't you?
Well, I...
Okay. So thank you for the overview, and I suppose I'd just like to pick up a little bit on the challenges that you were talking about. So the dampened mould issue that councils or people all over the country are trying to deal with at the moment, we've been absolutely honest. So we've got a robust system in place now. The head of housing is overseeing that. And we've recruited new staff, so we have a team, a team dedicated to it. So I think that's really important to ensure people how seriously we are taking it. On page 205, there are some HRA catch-up variances. They're well explained. We can answer more on that if anyone would like any further detail. I'd just like to say that how hard officers worked to look at the many challenges we have, to deal with the challenges and to, in some cases, renegotiate contracts. So although it looks as though that we're not spending all the money, it's for a very good reason. We've managed to save some money. So that's always very, very good news. So thanks to everyone for that. The variances, we've mentioned voids as well. Again, we are on that case. I do get quite upset when people give the impression that we don't care and that we aren't doing anything, because I know how hard officers are working to try and solve the issues, move this forward. And it's not through want of trying. We are absolutely on this. So as I said, get a bit annoyed when people suggest otherwise. So thanks to all the officers. Happy to answer any questions that relate to my portfolio. And I know we've got officers here to support me as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Gail. And Paul?
Thank you, Chair. My comment on the financial aspects. Counter tax and business rates collection has seen a slight increase in performance, moving from green to amber. But as the indicators show, we still are able to collect 99.67% of the counter tax collection and 99.53% of the business rates collection. And it's still very good. But of course, given the financial hardships that both residents and businesses are facing, this there is was inevitably likely to be a reduction, as is seen in other authorities. The rectory's performance on freedom of information request is up 7.3% compared with the previous quarter, and up 8.3% compared with quarter three of the previous years. In December, the Cabinet received a substantial report updating the budget proposal for 2023-24 and the medium term financial position covering the period up to 2027. The overall position is that for both the 23-24 budget and the medium term financial strategy are balanced without the use of reserves. It's all been proposed by the Council on Agreement delivery to inform. Last year, the council joined the DULAC, the Department for Living Up Housing and Communities, their Contract Management Pioneer Programme, securing placement to several offices to receive contract management qualifications, as well as participating in a national user group. I should I hint in plain interest that I am in non-familiar interest, but I am this council representative on the MP Law Board. Before I speak, in March 21, Norfolk County Council gave notice that they wished to review the partnership agreement with overseas oversight of the MP Law legal agreements between the County Council, Broadland, Norwich and Great Yarra to provide legal services. Since then, the authorities have worked together to approve revised business model, which allows for flexibility on the way the agreement works out on a manual basis and a more focused measuring performance based on outcomes. And this was agreed at the December meeting of the MP Law Board, which I attended. As to the financial positions that are contained in the various tables, I think we've already discussed the strength of the council's financial position. And this was confirmed, obviously, by the recent peer review board. Councillor Turner is absolutely right. Indeed, the leader of Buckingham Council did say that many councils would wish to kill their position that we are in. I didn't mention it because I was worried they might want to kill me, but we haven't been. But all the same, I think we are in a very strong position. And that is why we are in the present budget that we are today.
Thanks very much, Paul. Thank you very much. Any further questions from Cabinet members? Okay, over to you, James, if you have anything.
I do, thank you. A couple of slightly techy things, I think, insofar as, one relates to the voids. I was interested in the the case study around voids, not the voids figures themselves, but I was interested in this dashboard that uses Power BI and SharePoint. Primarily because we've had issues with voids before and there wasn't a fully integrated system, but the voids levels were lower. So I'm intrigued as to why it's taken this IT system in order to attempt to turn it around. And I have another slightly techy point. On page 197 in the table there, it talks about IT system availability. Now, the standard has to express it in nines, so the holy grail is five nines, nine to nine point nine nine nine. Now, we're going somewhere between two and seven eighth nines and three nines in our uptime. The uptime in this report is expressed during call hours. Now, it seems to me that we're encouraging challengeship from members of the public to come and use our systems outside of what we might consider to be call hours. So I wonder whether in future that report might show the uptime on a 24/7 basis rather than just the call hours. Thank you.
So answering those questions, but anything particularly Bob, anything on voids? Could you sort of just comment to?
So the power BI issue, we invested in a new housing software system last year. And the previous system could not interface properly with Power BI. We can pass efficient data through the system. The loss was held by divorce and it was not accessible to the council. It's now held inside the system. It's accessible to the council. And we're maximising the use of technology to enable staff to see in real time what's going on. So it's a change in where the data was really held as the fundamental theme, and the fact that the new software is able to interface with Power BI.
Thank you. Lou?
Thank you, Chair. Thanks, councillor White. I hope you won't mind if I say I'll come back to you in a minute. I'll go and have a conversation with the OT team. I'm going to have anyone here with me and see if I can take that away on the portback.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Always good for your technical interventions. I mean, they are very useful and you know that. Lucy, any questions to you? Question?
Thank you. Yeah, question. I know that you agree with me, councillor Waters, about the seriousness of the climate crisis.
Indeed.
And its impacts, which fall much, much hardest on the poorest. And that's reflected in the fact that it's on our risk register as a council. And we just heard that although £53 million is allocated over five years, although £290 million will be needed to get us to EPC-C in our homes, that money's not in fact going to be started to be spent for another year. So I hope we can get confident that that will be spent over five years. But given that, on page 195, Corporate Risk 21, equality impacts due to climate change, it's still in red, it's static. I'd like to know what's that made of? Why is it still in red? What work's being done? And how quickly do you think that that will no longer be red? As we've just heard, if we're not starting that investment this year, how can we be sure that that will actually start to move as quickly as it needs to move?
Well, of course, there will be, I could bring councillor Hampton in in a moment, but of course, there'll be a whole range of external factors which I could just throw off very easily. Child benefit cap to children, bedroom tax, which is grinding people, the fact that the local housing lands 30% has been remained frozen while private sector rents are allowed to fly away. And the loss of significant amounts of council homes with homespeople in affordable dwellings. Every day and everywhere, this government is screaming people, grinding them down. My description in Blue House about the legal system and that fairly vivid grinding and crushing and just relentless. And that's the kind of government we have. Every day and everywhere, they're looking to make people's lives more miserable. And so the external factors that we seek to mitigate and where we have that discretion, and for example, in our much applauded council tax reduction scheme, are an illustration of how we respond to that. In terms of, you know, the retrofitting work, and what we understand is there is a powerful connection between what we do around the environment and how we can help people's bottom line financially. And the houses that we build, the energy-efficient houses, people may have other financial pressures, but actually, energy is not going to be top of that list. So across that landscape, we are working incredibly hard. And as you will see from all of the issues that we have to address, we are looking for solutions. We're not passive recipients. And of course, you know, around the issue of retrofitting, as you know, councillor Galvin, we are working with a company who is helping us to find resources. And you know, you know that company very well. So we're looking at every opportunity. And the green financing stuff is part of that narrative as well. It's a valid question to ask, but it needs to be framed in a structural way. And we have to take account of those other drivers as well. And we hope, of course, for better outcomes within the next couple of years. Gail, do you want to? Lou, sorry, I apologise. Thank you for giving the note before me.
Thank you, Chair. Thanks, councillor Galvin. I'll answer the first, the part of your question which is about investment and about the funding of the business plan. And then you can probably answer the question about risk. In terms of the £290 million over five years, that's actually for moving our homes to full zero carbon. EPC-C is at 2030. We're aiming for that by 2030. That's a lower amount of funding. I think the other thing is that we're not actually waiting to do work to make our homes warmer and more affordable for tenants until we've got the stock condition data and we've got the thermography service. That, of course, is vital to us in planning that wider programme. We want to be data led. The recommendation that's screwed made around pilot will help with that too, to give us that rounded picture. But it's not, that investment is not happening. That work is ongoing through our existing programmes. So some of that is happening. It's just that that really firm plan will come forward next year to give us that clarity.
Colonel?
Thank you, Chair. Just a small addition to comments that Chair already made in terms of the impact on the risk you mentioned there. The other element of it is simply that we are moving as fast as we can to get work in place to put those things in place that we need to across the city. And you have seen from the papers that are coming to see next week that we've got a citywide plan that will start to deliver some of those, the things that we need to do. But it's the beginning of that process. So it's a timing issue. It should hopefully come down over the next year or two. The other factor obviously is just that a lot of the action we are taking is often being eroded by the positive in crisis. So there's more to the factors there.
Anything you want to do, either?
Not too much. I think between the contributions already, it's covered most of what I would say, which in summary, we are doing what we can action. I think we've been clear in the discussion tonight and in numerous other forums about what our ultimate goals and timescale deadlines are for that, some of the costs involved and about the other opportunities. Members will have to input into this. As I say, next one is going to be the seat meeting next week on the 14th, which is looking at the environmental programme, which drives all of this work. And as Alan said, retrofitting is going to be a core part of removing inequalities due to climate change. It outlines our approach to tackling fuel poverty as the immediate face of that in our city. But that's not the be all and end all. There has to be a wider world to sort of boost household income, the local economy. And of course, the top line is the government's part in that is massive. So we're doing what we can as quickly as we can on a worst-first basis, but it sits in a bigger picture.
Okay, comprehensive range of responses to your question, Lucy. Right, now. We're all done. We do have a below-the-line item attached. Does Jen, does anybody want to go below the line on this? Do we need to vote on this? We can just, we do not need to go below the line there, just remind me?
You don't need to vote to say you're not going to do that.
No, that's, I think we had this conversation. It's become a grandad date moment for us. I always ask the question.
What if you guys are grandad dads?
Absolutely.
Absolutely. Thank you. All right. So we don't need to go below the line for this. So we can go back to the recommendations on page 183, which is one and two, the review progress on the key performance indicators, et cetera. And then the financial position for quarter three. Paul is in favour of accepting those recommendations. Indicate. Okay, thank you very much. So now then, let's go on to the quality information report, which is on page 225. Now, this was given a good bearing. This is everything. High schools and committed. So I'm going to just be very brief on this, and if people have any questions, welcome to see it. Then there's an opportunity to do so. So this report, what we know, statutory duty to publish annually and to consider whether to develop policy, delivering services, managing our workforce. So that's our requirement. So there's a new format this year with five seconds, our duty, working with our communities, celebrations and commemorations, changing how we do things, information about our people, customer and employees. So I've touched on the legislative aspects of this. And of course, you know, speaking, looks very carefully at how do we meet our objectives under this duty. So section two, working with our communities, significant range of initiatives, projects involving offices, partners and communities, central part of our Norwich twenty four division. Securing a range of external funding and making sure that we reach communities right across the city to provide and support across sustainability and focusing around theories about people, place and economy. Section three, celebrations, so among those, and this is not an exhaustive list. Black History Month, trees for peace, Armed Forces Week, Refugee Week, St Martin's, with loan to the freedom of the city. So we recognise organisations that we work for, work with in this space. The democracy, freedoms to live and Odessa, commemorating the Holocaust and the very moving Holocaust event on the 27th of January. And the work that's been done around the good economy commission, an economy that works for people. So section four, how do we change the way we do things? So it's important that we focus, as we do, on residents and employees, putting our people first. Taking account of what has been a really very interesting time for all of us, you know, rethinking things from COVID-19, COVID recovery plan, which Stephen and Professor Collins put together. Looking forward, even while COVID was... Looking forward, even while Covid was still raging away and and now, of course, it's the cost of living and those things are, you know, connected. Um because it's a continuous set of challenges and still the equality is certainly sort of respond to that. Building on our successes, uh having a a diverse and inclusive workforce. And, you know, we have a big piece of transformation work underway, reshaping the way the council works and responds to the challenging environment. And then some information about our people, customers and employees, citizens. So we've got a whole range and I know there's some discussion about, you know, how we how do we use the data, how do we understand what success looks like. So that means um looking across a whole range of of different areas. Um we have the State of Norwich report, there'll be a revised um version of that coming out in light of the census. And I know that, you know, the census will continue to provide us with, as it were, real time information. And we will integrate that into what is a living document and that's particularly in important. And we've done a lot of work around wellbeing, a good piece of work we did during the year around the wellbeing of the organisation down at St Andrews Andrews Hall, and of course, the ever moving landscape around um, you know, people's financial sustainability and issues around racism and tackling that and issues around gender pay. The whole range of things is encompassed by this 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 equality equality duty. Uh and and so it is a reflection of the fact that we we learn and understand how things are changed, how information is received, how people can absorb what we're providing and some adjustments have been made. And I've got many particular thanks to to um uh Dawn and Emma around the work that's been done in this area. So with that hotline, I'm going to ask um Emma, you're the author of this report, if anything you'd like to add to my initial comments.
And it's probably just worth mentioning that we are progressing the development of our group together, so inclusion strategy. Um which some of the information that's in the final section of this report will also form half the evidence base for that. We're carrying our application of work with um communities. So this report is kind of the basis for the next step sometimes of our approach. Um how we're going to align our resources, how we make sure we're helping the people that need our help the most. Um we've obviously been working with the county council on our kind of data sets, specifically around our H C quality target areas. Um and so that will be feeding into our thinking. We've also got our state of Norwich slides, which we produce each year, which presents the wider picture on how the city's doing. Obviously, the changes that are reflected in there are are um are progressive. So it's quite long time to to see some changes in wellbeing and what have you. But we are revising those and hope to publish a new set in people. And so we will share those with members to have a look at all the proposed publishers this year to make sure that captures the the whole picture. Um because we are seeing a lot of change. So, thank you.
Thank you. Dawn, could you could you just pick up for us um the diversity of the workforce issue? Because I notice a signal momentum behind that.
Yeah, thank you. So, no, certainly, it is progressing in a kind of very positive way. We did come to cabinet sometime ago with an action plan for our, we would address the fact that we're not reflecting on our communities, recognising that that would take some time to achieve, but are moving in the right direction on the back of Black Lives Matters. Obviously, Stephen personally spearheaded something uh around that with cabinet. And you can see from some of our recruitment statistics that that is making a huge difference. There was a slight error in the report. We've increased from a a kind of ethnic minority heritage being three point one percent when we started that piece of work to the end of March twenty-two, increasing to eight point three percent. And if I refer to page fifty-eight, the group stats show as well, there is previously had quite a big drop off in terms of ethnic minority, ethnic minority heritage, when you get to shortlisting and appointment stage. There is actually, that's looking very, very positive. Still a slight drop off at the office stage, but I'm moving in the the right direction. And actually, we've got a number of characteristics we're working on as well. But I think that was the the real canvas post at the strong front in in terms of um that um that that piece of work that's showing you benefits.
Um Stephen?
Yeah, I I just wanted to say I'm really, I'm really pleased to see this 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 kind of improvement. And and I said when I brought the, when we brought the paper to cabinet that couple of years ago now, that as a as a city council, our workforce didn't reflect the diversity of the city that we were here to serve. And and it's really important to me and to everybody that we we took action to improve that. And this is challenging. It doesn't happen overnight. But I think since then, we've shown that incremental increase. I can see it around the workplace and uh and, you know, that richness of diversity and the different views and the different backgrounds of colleagues uh can only make us a better organisation. And we've we've got to continue in this this direction of travel.
Yeah, very good, very good. Any cabinet members comments on this? Yes, go.
Just to commend the officers for the enormous amount of work that they've put into this to to make it a uh an easy read for us. Uh and then interesting read. So I think that's really important. So and thanks for obviously switching your portfolio for the work you've done with it, Alan.
Supported by extremely good offices. Right, um okay, I'm going to pass on Lucy. Would you, did you have a question you'd like to ask?
Thank you, yes. And thank you, Anne, for the report. Um it counts for you, as we said, it was really useful. And um it's very good that it's a report that comes back every year and shows all those projects the council does and its partners with its partners um to increase equality and diversity. One element that stood out for me is that forty percent of Norwich is amongst the most deprived twenty percent in England, which is um, you know, unpalatable figure really for us. Um on page two hundred and thirty-nine, there's a um one of the um key points raised is that seventeen H, it says, two-way dialogue with the council could be improved by better connecting the council, speaking, listing and decision-making functions to create genuine open dialogue with members of the Norwich community. I read that because I think it's really important. There's something we've talked about for years, including in the task and finish group on social capital, um which which gave the council a kind of framework for for how it engages. I just wondered why this only happens in pockets and how we'll improve this going forward, how we're going to engage citizens sort of concrete two-way dialogue and and what sort of two-way dialogue are we employing to actually develop the engagement strategy itself?
And then you can either go to the document as I go. Um so we're setting this out and I was just.
Could could you um could could you cut to the minus, would you mind? So just a difficult with the public to hear.
Yes, I was just saying, um this will this will come together in our citizen discussion strategy, which we are being together at the moment and we will be able to share shortly. Excuse me. Um and and in framing that, we have been using the the evidence that we've gathered from various pilots over the last couple of years of how we go about engaging with communities. We've got our community conversation posts, our community connectors. We've had various projects going on through the CRF. We've got some things that we've been doing that have enabled us to test ways of doing this effectively and to assess that and to take that forward into the lessons that we can learn for the development of this citizen participation strategy. And our plan for that is that it should be a sort of open uh constantly rolling document almost. So we will put in a present draft for consultation, obviously in a very participative way. Um and then the plan is that it should be something that is a living document that we can develop as we go as we receive more views from people and as we learn more about what's working and what's not working. So we think that would give a good way of making that making that work effectively. There's then obviously the need to make sure that we can load that up in the organisation and make sure everyone across the organisation who needs to engage with residents and and understand the position that that the residents of the city are in and how that affects their service areas, that they understand the tools they can use and how they can access that. And so we'll have a programme in place as well around communicating and culture change and and upscaling that people across the council to to help them engage with all of that. So that's the plan. And as I say, it should start to come to fruition over the next few months.
Thank you very much for the comprehensive response. And James, any any questions you'd like to raise?
Well, the only comment, if you um want me to, I can read out some of the discussion points that happened at scrutiny. I was unwell, so I didn't actually uh participate in that meeting, but I do have a note.
That would be helpful.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Um so as we've heard, scrutiny um looked at this and there were a few points. Uh first, which was around trade-based reporting. Um could the next equality information report include um that in in order that year-on-year comparisons can be made? Um the second one was around socioeconomic background of the workforce. Um I think uh Dawn and you advised that work was currently ongoing to consider how the socioeconomic background of employees could be plotted. Um so scrutiny said, could that be included in the report next year? Um contextual recruitment, where lived experience is given weight rather than qualifications. And again, um Dawn advised that in terms of practices, which excluded people without formal qualifications, work was ongoing. And when services service reviews were conducted, uh job descriptions were reviewed to see if if all aspects were required. Um there was a discussion around uh reducing inequality target areas, REITers, um how success was measured. And members asked for a report providing data detailing the objectives of the REITers and the progress made in meeting them. And then finally, um cus- customer flags indicating vulnerability. Um members were reassured that this information was shared with the council's contractors and asked if a strand could be included in the next equality information report on flags and what they denoted in terms of equalities data. Thank you.
Thanks very much. That's that's very helpful. Um those those are like explorable issues, but um we can clearly take a look at these. Emma's making couple of notes. Uh did you want to make an initial response or have to move it forward?
No, I just want to make a bit more logical than that. It's cracked it in, so yeah, we've we've begun some of the trend analysis in section five, but we must forget the census data. Um I think some of the stuff coming out, they could do that as soon as we can, just do that for this reflection and then that will help inform how we move forward.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks very much. Any other comments from the cabinet members? Can we therefore go to the recommendation, which is asking us to approve the publication of the annual equality information report twenty twenty-three? Yours favourite is indicate. Thank you very much. Right, let's go on to um a report that I will be extremely brief on. Page seven hundred and ninety-one, the Greater Norwich Joint Five-Year Infrastructure Investment Plan. Um any come and join us at the the top table? So our colleagues will be familiar with this, Five-Year Infrastructure Investment Plan, uh which is done in partnership with our greater Norwich partners, uh which is Brobden's, South Norfolk County Council, um comes to each cabinet um and has to be signed up by all of us, which also has veto powers. Yeah, so and here it is. It's it's with us this this evening. So the the point, it's a very useful document and some excellent work done by by Grace, who pulls all this together with her colleagues, which is the draft plan. It's a draft plan until they agree it. Um and that's on page three hundred and nineteen to four hundred and ten. And what you see across that landscape is because we have the unique position of pulling our sill, everybody can fit into the pot, identify projects relevant to their local authority area, there's connectivity between different industries. And we've built up, I think, a very strong amount of funding, leveraging significant resources to build the physical infrastructure, the social infrastructure, um the leisure infrastructure uh among a whole strand of different uh areas to make uh for the residents of that wider wider area. That's the ambition. And at each meeting of the board, we have projects come back and talk to us about what the money has meant to them. And it is extremely positive story. So that's a good thing, democracies delivering in partnership. So what we have um in in this report, a particular note are um some issues that we we discussed around two new categories to the infrastructure investment fund. One relates to match funding and the other relates to major infrastructure projects. And the idea of this, of course, is to enable us to bring forward schemes that may be on a financially more ambitious scale. In the case of major infrastructure projects, at the moment, we have a situation where stuff has to be shovel ready. A number of times I've heard that from governments, saying, have you got something shoveled ready? That has to be delivered within the year. With increasing desperation, one fears. Um however.
Oven ready.
Oven ready. No, no oven ready, I think has been vaguely discredited by a by a previous incumbent to ten Downing Street. Um but to therefore make it possible to put in schemes which, you know, will run over one, two, three years and and be valid, because otherwise it rather cranks our style. I mean, it's been very successful. We've got schemes away very quickly, but actually, there's more you can do around that. And and match funding, um with various um important um conditions and checks to also be included in moving projects forward. And then there is a second clause, which literally relates to um uh the housing capital, the school building programme for the county council to ensure that that money is reinforced to the Greater Norwich area. So it's schools in the Greater Norwich area that will benefit from that. And we have a commitment with our partners around the long-streck bypass and making sure that that is funded properly. Every local authority has the things it wants. We have the things that we want, that to make sure that we get all of those things through that we need, that consensus. The the last point I want to raise is sadly our unsuccessful leveling up funding bit. So we had ambitious scheme for the city centre. Norwich is a vital um space for all the residents of Norfolk and and beyond. And also an important initiative, slow bottom power. Now, we didn't get that funding. But we did get some match funding through uh the partnership. We want to keep that money in play. And the rationale behind that is there may be other sources of funding that we may be able to access to move those schemes forwards. So rather than say, well, what a pity, two great schemes back on the shelf. Uh what we're saying uh is that we we need to have money in place. And in my experience, and I think other experiences, there are other streams of money that do come on. And Stephen has talked about a third round for Luff. Um we have a devolution deal, which I think although it comes in in two years' time. Uh if it if it does, depending on uh the um whether it's a general election or not. Um nonetheless, that that has already identified us as a place where additional funding can come uh to the council. And there's a writing uh below the line which gives an example of that. So those are the those are the substantive um uh recommendations uh on the report. And at that point, I'm going to pause. Anything else then from you in relation to this report that you'd like to highlight?
No, thank you.
Right. Thank you.
Solid good.
Thank you. I I I probably take that as a group confidence, isn't it?
I think so.
Okay.
He did his job, but he's got nothing to add.
Well, there we are. So any any um questions from cabinet members or council cabinet members?
I wouldn't comment. And I welcome um the the schemes are outlined um in the report and welcome the report. Um I just want to highlight um that under the River Wensum strategy, the completing the Nor- Norwich Riverside Walk is a very high quality, has been for the city council for some time. Um and it's currently um it got to sort of design and costing stage and it's currently on hold. And it's currently, it got to sort of design and costing stage and it's currently on hold due to rising costs. And I would urge the county council to complete that work and to ensure that it can be completed as soon as possible.
Yeah, very good news. Go ahead.
Yeah, I'd just like to make the point, I think it is a good idea if we can keep the two schemes on the backboard burner in a way. Because if we can get some match funding, then these are the slow bottom and the gilt old hills, it really important to us. So always not lost, really.
And I need to correct myself because we have a report which talks about the benefits of, I think, probably that devolution, which is above and below the line. Right, James, I think it's your turn to start for that, any points you'd like to raise?
Well, I just wanted to make a comment on slow bottom, a part which I use from time to time. And I suppose it's sort of interesting in terms of the pooling of SIL and how we work outside of local authority boundaries. I'm not particularly aware of the park run that happened. And I know people there come from Broadland and other local authority areas. So that sort of scheme whilst being hugely beneficial directly to people who live in Maelcross and are very much on top of the park, has wider benefits outside of our city boundaries. And I think it's always worth bearing that sort of thing in mind.
Yeah. Absolutely, I mean, that shows that, you know, there's that Greater Norwich entity, which is for all residents in here and a benefit to every quality. And yeah, Norwich benefits as deeply as it could still, it really does. Anything from Lucy?
Thank you, yes. I want to ask about the neighbourhood community element of SIL, about 15% and consultation with ward councillors. When SIL was first implemented, there was much more consultation with ward councillors, which seems to us to have been dropped and the leaders get to agree the projects. We asked about how ward councillors have consulted a year ago and were told there are three main ways. Through Pledge Norwich, where any group can request match funding up to 5,000, applications for general community funding, like the social support, like given a wall road is funded in that there. Or a SIL internal board, based on intelligence from the community, like community connectors. So we asked for a copy of the minutes of the internal board to get an idea of the projects considered, but we were told no. So can we have a look at those minutes as councillors, so we get an idea? Because I think councillors do have a really good handle and a lot asks from the community. And it's important to make sure our voices are heard, to represent the people they're elected to represent through this process. It's a community infrastructure that we are part of.
Sure, I mean, I think there's a balance between elected representatives, of which we are, those people and communities. And it's a balance between hearing the community voice, various projects coming forward and how far that should be filtered through the voice of elected members. So, you know, our communities need agency as well in this process. It's only because you raised it in that way that I'm just reflecting on it as I'm responding to you. But I just want to pick up, is there any further information you can provide about that kind of process then?
So the neighbourhood SIL element is the only part of this that I'm not directly involved in. I've gathered the information from Max Griffiths, Sean Finance, in terms of what appears in the report. But unless Helen has a view on this as Max's manager, I would suggest that I speak to him tomorrow, if possible, and just ask him why it is that, you know, your request you made wasn't possible.
Yes, then yes, tell me that. And which one to add, Lucy?
Can I just respond and say that as a councillor, we don't seek to impose our views of what's necessary, we seek to reflect the community. So I would just say that's a very important part of certainly what I do as a councillor and what I see around this table. So I don't think it's about councillors imposing their views.
No, I just think it's an interesting question about the balance between those things. How far is it installed? There'll be points at which councillors come to a convening views. And there's the table and we obviously have the feeling which to do that. But also the opportunity to communities in SIL to articulate their aspirations. And the legislation was written, I think, in that way when those mechanisms were brought in, you know, Eric Pickles. So what we'll do is we'll take it away and we'll have a look at that. So thank you for raising that with us. If there are any more questions, we're happy to accept the recommendations, please indicate if you are. Thank you very much. So now, that's enough, shall we go on to, and thanks very much, Ben. Can we go on to procurement of leaseholder insurance, which I believe?
Fascinating.
It is, this is going to be interesting.
You've been very patient, Mike, so glad you provided some examples. Right, the paper itself is quite self-explanatory. Once again, we find the council in precision of having to find a new provider for our leaseholder insurance. Under the leases entered into by our leaseholders, there is a requirement that we source the necessary cost of building's material damage, although the cost is actually borne by the leaseholders. Our present provider, Avid Insurance, is withdrawing from the leaseholder market as of the 1st of April 2023, leaving the council without a leaseholder insurance provider. So we had to move quite quickly. The current public sector leaseholder providers now just two providers with three major providers having withdrawn. Insurers are having been incurring losses providing this type of insurance. It is possible that the private sector property insurers might be attracted to the public social housing insurance market. Any future insurer is likely to favour a long-term contract. Procurement options are documented as at paragraph seven, and it is obvious that we need to move quickly on this. The council established the use of an accelerator procurement as a legitimate way through which insurance can be procured in a competitive way, seeking to achieve best value for the council's leaseholders while still remaining compliant with procurement regulations. It is of course of concern that the premiums are likely to increase with less choice of providers and increases across the insurance sector. We know how residents across the city are struggling with the cost of living crisis, so tenders will be evaluated on a 70% price and 30% coverage in claims handling basis. On the 23rd of January, the council issued an invite to tender for leaseholder insurance on a three-year basis, with the optimum extension for two further years. The tenders are due back to the council today, I believe, and the contract awarded to be awarded on the 24th of February. I'm hoping that there have been some applications, otherwise we need to follow the emergency procedure set out in paragraph 13. Due to the short notice the council's been given of the need to re-tender the contract, there is not time to undertake the normal leaseholder consultation. But the law allows for a way to deal with this urgent situation, and again, that's explained in paragraph 16. So the recommendation is on page 43, I'm sure that Leah might have something to add.
Leah, does anyone want to add anything? Put it on the spot.
I'm not necessarily sure we would want me to because of our references to developments data, but I haven't yet had opportunity to speak to go as portfolio holder. So we can look at that, those options and have some further discussions and then we'll hopefully be able to update before we get to a due course.
But we can go ahead with the recommendations.
Yes, the recommendations, they are of time.
That's fine, okay. Any cabinet members? Lucy, anything on this item, procurement item, no? James, anything from you? Or let's go to the recommendation then, which is on page 433. All those in favour of that recommendation is indicated, thank you very much. Right, let's then go on to the supplementary agenda, which is item 11, Ward Contract for Door Entry and Access Control Systems for New Site Installations. And that's all part of the report. Go ahead, over to you.
And Brian.
And Brian, hello Brian, good to see you.
Right, well, this paper is for us to consider awarding the contract for the door entry and access control systems to include communal entries to replacement. I'm sure that we're all welcome this. A single supplier is provided by the council for the installation of new door entry and door access control systems at approximately 207 sites of schemes across the city, which have been identified as needing additional security measures based on antisocial behaviour. The agreement is due to commence on the 1st of April 2023 and the installations will take place over a six-year work programme. The previous five-year programme was completed in August 2022 and with the council already having door entry access control systems, it's beneficial to provide parity with the same system and the materials used with this new six-year programme. This is a significant investment for this council with the value of the contract expected to be £650,000 for the first year of the contract in 2324, £506,000 for 202425, and then £500,000 per annum up to 2029, pending budget approval and satisfactory supplier performance. A suitable framework releasing procurement limited was identified and suppliers were asked to approve for the many different types of doors, layos, screens, door entry, access control systems for the various site schemes required in the course of the six-year programme. Tenders were evaluated with a maximum of 40% of the available marks awarded for price and 60% of the marks awarded for various quality criteria. Two suppliers submitted bids for the contract and the scores are set out on a table on paragraph 10. The supplier offering the best value for money from the benchmarking exercises Alpha Track Systems Limited at £3,573,680 and £45p, excluding VAT. So as you expect, due diligence has been carried out on the winning supplier and the procurement exercise has been undertaken in accordance with the council's contract procedures. As long as we approve the proposal tonight, EPL can issue the official award to the successful supplier. It should also be noted that the award is also pending the successful completion of a leaseholder consultation, although stages one and two have been completed. This work forms part of the HRA Capital Programme. It is proposed that the higher level of installations is carried out in the first year of the contract, hence the proposed higher budget allocation. Importantly, the contract will be subject to ongoing review to ensure satisfactory performance and delivery of the contract by the supplier. We know how important this is to so many of our residents, so I'm looking forward to the start of this important contract. So it's the recommendation on page five, and Brian might want to add to that.
Anything you'd like to add, Brian?
I think you've covered us, to be honest. I think we've spent a lot of time looking at specification, ensuring that the contract we get in place actually supplies value. And that doesn't mean that it's the cheapest price, but actually we get quality. I think the key part about this is that we ensure that the consultation processes carried out not only about the section 20, but with residents about styles, choice, et cetera. And the role we put in is fit for purpose for the residents in the individual blocks, which basically means that it's not a one-size-fits-all, it's about customer choice.
Okay, so this is actually a report about are we satisfied with the procurement process and the processes around staffing consultation and so on. So that's the focus of our points. If we have any cabinet members, anything on this? Satisfied with the procurement? James, you okay? Lucy?
Thank you, yeah, thank you for making that point as well, Brian. It's about customer choice and how important it is that it's people's homes and they're all different and behaviours are different around them. I wanted to ask for details of how residents have been engaged with.
Oh, talking past tense.
Yeah, have been, what lessons have been learned from the previous five-year programme? And how we'll be engaging with them going forwards? So that could be outside this meeting, we just have some details about how the engagement will happen going forwards and what lessons we learn.
Do you, but yes, okay, but do you feel that, you know, the robustness of the procurement and the robustness of the process points that Brian's made are positive? Deliver what's needed?
Me.
Yeah, just, I mean, looking retrospectively, you're talking about, you know, lessons learned. But in a way, those sorts of things will be crystallised, I think, in this report, in the way the procurement process is carried out. And the points that Brian makes about, you know, tailoring it to, you know, not just a uniform block of participation, but reflecting, you know, the needs, aspirations and people.
I mean, just to echo Cabinet Waters' comments there, I think the biggest lesson is about the communication and consultation. And actually, the, there are individual solutions to individual sites. And what we say is due year two, there may be a change. So lots of this is around, as you all know, ASV group is probably still in our process of being raised without. What we're mindful of is that we don't use age data to say what we do today. So there's a reset of understanding of requirements, part and parcel. But also I think a larger exercise, which isn't strictly this, but is around what we don't have is displaced. We might put it in somewhere and then it drives behaviour elsewhere. And that's why we're putting in the door interests in the particular site. So it's about one context, about how can we give feedback out of meeting.
Yeah, so great, thanks.
I'd just like to say I know how hard Brian and the team have worked on this. And I know he's walked a few miles having a look at lots of doors. So I'd like to thank you for your diligence on this and I think this is a good way forward, thank you.
Good, good, well-tembrated report, thank you very much. Right, I think we can go to the vote now on the recommendations, all those in the face, thank you very much. And let's come to our last item of the evening. Go ahead, aren't you lucky with? We have a green paper that we've asked if anyone, before we go to the recommendations, wants to go below the line, if they don't, then we can take the recommendations. So do I have to depart for this item, quite unfortunately?
Yes. You're carrying an intro.
I'm done, listen, you're off.
You can come back if you want. Oh, my God, I got some supper.
Shall we?
Okay, so we'll just wait for you to leave the analysis process away. And, yes, okay, thanks.
Thanks, Mo. Last report, but a really important one. So the council's been contacted by the Department for Levelling Up Housing in Communities regarding two funding opportunities provisionally allocated to the council. The first is through the Norfolk Devolution Deal, where up to £2 million has been provisionally allocated to deliver new affordable housing. The second is through the Local Authority Housing Fund, with £1.466 million provisionally allocated towards providing accommodation for Ukrainian and Afghan refugees. If we look at the Norfolk Devolution Deal first of all, the money is provisionally been awarded, subject to the business case being approved by Deluxe for the acquisition of or development of new affordable housing in the city. The funding would provide up to 50% of the total cost, with the HRA providing the remaining 50%. The funding is available in 2022-23, so that makes building from scratch impossible. Preferred option to keep to the timescale is to acquire 12 homes already under construction, as set out in the exempt papers. The good news is that it has been agreed that we would be able to use the funding, 10% right to retain right to buy receipts and 40% HRA funding. It's an interesting mix, but you know, it's important that we can get that 10% right to buy receipts. That's an interesting mix, but, you know, it's important that we can get that ten percent right-to-buy receipts in there. It's always good news when we can, when we can use the retained right-to-buy receipts. It's also recommended that a further twelve properties are purchased directly by the HRA using forty percent retained right-to-buy receipts, and the remainder coming from the HRA reserves or borrowing. All of these properties would be of a high environmental standard. I'm already thinking of this as a a Devo project and a bonus that we will have twenty-four more much-needed council homes, even though it would be remiss of me not to say that more funding would be welcome from this government. However, however, we need delegated authorities to approve the acquisitions and the acceptance of the funding once confirmation is received, with full details being provided on page thirteen. Moving on to the Local Authority Housing Fund Refugee Funding, DILUP have recently announced um funding to provide accommodation for Ukrainian, Afghan refugees. The city council has provisionally been allocated sums outlined in the exempt appendix with two funding screen streams. The main element is to provide funding for a minimum of thirteen dwellings. The bridging element is to provide funding for a minimum of two larger four-bed plus homes for refugees currently residing in bridging accommodation. Funny enough, um, DILUP have asked for all acquisitions to be completed by the end of November twenty twenty-three, so that gives us an enormous amount of time, as you can imagine. To obtain the funding, we need to provide both elements of the scheme, both elements of the scheme, and officers have been working with other agencies to discuss the housing needs of current refugees. A number of options has been considered, as in paragraph eighteen. But from the council's point of view, the preferred option, and something which I believe we could all support, would be the refurbishment of existing long-term city council-owned properties that are void and require major works. We need to work up proposals for submission by March twenty twenty-three. Once again, we are asking for delegated authority so that the business case can be worked up and submitted by the tight deadline. There are exempt papers which can be discussed if desired. And there are four clear recommendations on page thirteen of the above the line papers, so that we can proceed at the necessary pace. Again, I have to thank officers for the speed at which they've produced these proposals, the diligence and all the work they've undertaken. And perhaps they might want to add more, but we have to think of this as a bonus, although I would have liked more money.
Yeah, I mean, it sits outside the HRA business plan, but it is a very sort of manna from heaven moment. Um, Andrew, anything you'd like to add? You've done a lot of legwork on this.
And then Councilor Harris has come in perfectly. All of the points, I hope if there are questions, are needed.
Okay. Cabinet members, any questions? James, anything?
Uh, thank you, Joe. I have a a process question, I think.
Sure.
Um. In the above-the-line papers, um, section fourteen uh refers to some funding which are subsequently shown in the below-the-line papers. What I don't fully understand is why, given this is government funding coming to the council via the Local Authority Housing Fund, it needs to be exempt. And so it, a process question, I'm not going to obviously say the figures because they are exempt, but I just couldn't fully understand why it needed to be that way, given that it's government funding.
Okay. That's a, that's a fair question. Um, Andrew.
The government haven't actually announced the figures, um, the provisional amounts. They've just notified local authorities of that initial amount, and it's for them to then work out proposals.
So on on that basis, presumably at the point of government announcement, then we we can go above the line with with that information.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good, good, good to pick that question. Thank you for the answer. Uh, Lucy, anything on this?
Yes, thank you. Um, I guess it's a more question, um, a more political question. The, uh, there was a, a sum of money went to King's Lynn recently as well. Um, uh, the county council leader, Andrew Proctor, said um, the benefits of the count, of the deal are already beginning to flow. Um, this is money that wouldn't have come. This is just the start. If we get this deal over the line, we can make a massive difference to Norfolk. The consultation's only just started on on this deal. And and it's nowhere near finished. Um, does this, does it mean an endorsement of the deal? Um, um, is there any going back? Um, would it be an endorsement of the deal from the city council?
Um, I mean, I would, I I would certainly agree with you that, um, I've always felt that consultation should come before decisions. So, you know, we've got a decision of the Norfolk County Council, who are the only only game in town when it comes to um conversations with 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 Whitehall. And we will be making our our submission in 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 due course. And I'm looking, as I think you probably know, for a consensus across all three groups about what the ambition and what a devolution deal should look like, should be. Um, but I think this is something which is somebody that's arrived and it's twenty-four homes or none. And that's the point. So uh we, I'm sure, will be minded to to take that money to provide twenty-four much-needed homes. And I don't see that in any way constraining us in the views that we uphold about what we think a devolution should should look like. And I'm on the record as saying, actually, a good devolution deal for the county, if we take it from the perspective of that dialogue between county and Whitehall, would have been that they wouldn't be making up to six million pounds' worth of cuts in vital services alongside the devolution deal. We've always had concerns about the fact, and we did in twenty sixteen, that there's a kind of, there's more money going out than coming in around those things. Okay.
And I think I've made it quite clear that we would expect, we would like more money from government. I'd like, you know, it needs to be properly funded. I'm not happy with the ti- timescales, but it's, you know, it's twenty-four homes that we didn't have, but we are putting our own money into contributing to that. So it's a, you know, we we have to grasp opportunities, which we don't necessarily like the underlying devolution deal. But if they're offering us money for housing at the moment, homes are really important.
Yeah.
And if we turn it down, then they might say, well, you don't, obviously, you don't believe that homes are important.
Yeah, so this is all pointed out, Lucy, thank you very much. And uh, I think that puts our position very clearly. Anybody want to go below the line to discuss this before we go to the recommendations? Um, so let's go to the recommendations. And those are laid out on page thirteen, always in favour of recommendations. Thank you very much. Um, and that concludes.